Hello. It's good morning for us, for those of you watching at home. This may not be morning, this could be just about any time. I'm Mark Chapman, editor of Nancy on Norwalk and moderator of the debate. Nancy Chapman will be the timer. We ask everyone who is here, and we do have a small audience in the house, to remain quiet. No applause, cheering, jeering, or tearing. We ask everyone to turn off your cell phones and any other electronic devices other than pacemakers that might be a distraction. This is a Nancy on Norwalk run debate, our first. It features the two District A Board of Education candidates. Dr. Yvette Krevker, running on the Democratic line, sitting on your left, and on your right, Mr. Joseph Perella, running as an unaffiliated candidate on the Republican line. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement, and then we will ask a series of questions alternating who gets to go first. Each candidate will get a one-minute rebuttal for each question, and the moderator reserves the right to ask for more specific answers. At the end of the questions, each candidate will get a two-minute closing statement. And we tossed a coin to see who will open, and Dr. Krevker is the person who is going to open up with the first statement. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, hello to everyone. I'm very pleased to be here, to have the opportunity to allow myself to get to know everyone in the room, as well as those who are viewing this online. I first want to thank Mr. Perella for making himself available. It's been very difficult for me to be able to attend some of the forums, and I'm very pleased that Nancy on Norwalk is doing this for the voters and also giving me the opportunity to express myself or to share some of my ideas. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perella?
Yeah, just good morning to everyone, and again, thank you for putting this together. Again, I know that there was kind of some scheduling issues and really wanted to really get this together so that voters would have the opportunity to hear really, you know, where we stand and what we are intending to do, you know, if we are elected to the board. So thank you.
Okay. First question to Mr. Perella. Given the recent history and the golden handcuffs clause in Dr. Adamowski's contract, there is a good chance the Board of Education members elected in November will be involved in the next superintendent search and hiring. One can hope that that won't be the case, but it's very probable. So this is a two-parter. Would you vote to use the same search firm, ProAct, or any of its offshoots or successors, given the controversy surrounding them? And would you vote to keep the search secret until a decision has been made, as has been done recently, as opposed to bringing in, making the last couple of finalists public? Mr. Perella?
I mean, it's hard to say until, you know, let's say the moment actually comes if you would use the same search firm. But I would say that, you know, given what they've done so far, that there would be no reason not to, or at least examine other, you know, companies or agencies out there that are doing the same thing. In terms of opening it to the public, I think that at some point you may, but I also think that it is important that it is kind of done in an executive session. Because I think that potentially you could be clouding your decision based on input from the public, who may or may not have all of the information in front of them.
Okay. Dr.?
For me, excuse me, in terms of the search firm, I would always like to revisit our options, and just to see which search firm meets our particular needs, whether it's the one that was previously used or a new search firm. So that being said, in terms of how we'll go about identifying a superintendent, I do agree with the fact that we need to keep it within the board, because what you tend to do there is you might have a high-quality candidate who doesn't want to apply because they're currently under contract. Unless we change how we do things as a state and say, you know, everything's going to be open or everything's going to be closed, I totally agree with keeping things secret, as you might want to say, until we get to the finalist stage where the candidate or candidates feel more comfortable and the board might open it up to the public. That being said, in terms of trying to find the best candidate, I also believe that we should try and have it as open as possible. So I know I'm talking, you know, doing like apples and oranges here, but I think interaction between the audience, which is with the parents, the voters, and the candidates is very, very important. But if we don't make it under executive meetings, then it's less likely that we'll be able to find the best candidate for the position.
Okay. Mr. Perella, any response to that, or?
No, I mean, again, I agree. I think that it is important that, you know, you, the board is really looking at this from an executive level simply because of confidentiality of some of these, you know, potential candidates. You know, they may not be open to applying if they know the public is going to be, you know, watching and potential their current employer. So I think that's kind of important.
Dr. Krevker, do you have anything to add?
Oh, no.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question. This one, Dr. Krevker, is yours to start. What is your position on charter schools and other public-private partnerships in the school system, and also on school vouchers?
Well, I'm a public school product. My personal preference and professional preference is to keep everything in-house and have the school district run its own schools. I can see the value of some charter schools because they tend to specialize, but there's no reason why we couldn't also specialize within the public school system. So my stance on it is that if we ever do any sort of partnership or even consider doing anything outside of Norwalk Public Schools, that we don't take anything away from Norwalk Public Schools. That only enhances and improves what we do.
Okay, Mr. Perella?
To some extent, I agree. You know, I believe that we shouldn't really be, you know, if you're looking at charter schools, you shouldn't be looking at a charter school at the expense of something from the public school. But I do believe that, you know, if the community, if the parents, if the public within Norwalk, within the district, if it's something that they're interested in, then it should be something that is explored. Again, it should not be at the expense of anything that's currently done, but I think that also, you know, the charter schools tend to currently have, you know, are doing more outside of, let's say, the normal general public education. So there may be learnings and there may be expertise that you're able to somehow use or bring in.
Okay. Dr. Krevker, any response?
No, I don't have any.
And Mr. Perella? Okay, moving to the third question. There's a finite pot of money. Once the budget is established, and it is a huge portion of the city of Norwalk's budget. And there's an infinite number of things to spend that money on. Special education, of course, extracurriculars, technology, staffing, professional development, and lots more. And, Ms. Perella, what would be your spending priorities?
In terms of?
In terms of the Board of Education budget. Where do you think the resources need to be, need to go, and where might they be trimmed or taken from if you need to?
Well, I would say that the first thing that you really need to do is look at the way you're spending. And currently, I think that, you know, the processes and the procedures that we're using through, you know, let's say, our central office could definitely be modernized and streamlined to gain efficiencies. So potentially, while you're maybe not, you know, cutting funding, you're stretching your dollars to get more from them. I think, you know, right now, the biggest allocation of the budget is your teachers. And I think that you can't really start to, you know, trim down, you know, your educators. You know, you need to be competitive with surrounding towns. And, you know, when you start to, let's say, not be competitive, you tend to lose teachers and administrators. So I think it's important that, you know, you spend the money where you need to, but you also really look to spend it wisely. So one of the biggest things that I would look to do is, you know, what I would refer to as, you know, operational excellence, which is really looking at the way you operate and the way that, you know, the processes and procedures by which you get things done. I think that right now, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that area.
Okay, Dr. Krevker?
For me, in terms of priority, the first would be performance. And not the way that we tend to look at performance in terms of just academic performance, but also social development. Making sure that students have what they need in order to socially develop and grow up as individuals. That being said, if we focus on their development, that translates or should translate into positive outcomes in terms of academic performance. In order to truly sustain this, we need to provide professional development that supports the policies and programs that we have in place and that we want to develop over time to make it sustainable. And the way to make it sustainable is by building capacity. If we build capacity with our administrators and our teachers and allow them to get training that is specialized, where they self-select what they want to learn, but at the same time, train them in terms of, here's the direction that we're going, and we're going to train you in these areas, then it's more likely that we maintain, keep these administrators, and the teachers that we do have become teacher leaders, and eventually, they might become the administrators that take over for those who might retire. Because what I don't want to happen is, I don't want to have high turnover for administrators and high turnover for teachers. Because if we're continually training teachers and trying to help them stay in Norwalk Public Schools, then we'll never be able to advance in terms of a high academic achievement.
Okay. Mr. Perella, do you have anything to add, or?
Well, again, I agree with the professional development. I think that's critical with, you know, moving forward and, again, retaining teachers. I think it's also important that you look at professional development, you know, as it pertains to, again, building capacity. So early literacy is, you know, an area where, you know, it's proven that that's where it all starts. So having teachers that are really, you know, trained and focused on the capabilities within that area is critical. So if teachers don't have that capability, potentially giving them the professional development they need is critical.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
I just want to extend what I was saying about the professional development. The, what I want to see it yield is reduce costs down the road. For example, if we build the capacity and we provide professional development, and we know that our teachers and administrators have X, Y, and Z, meaning that they know about instruction, they know about assessment, they know how to provide supports and services and interventions for students, then down the road, it's less likely that we'll need to outplay students, or it's less likely that we'll need to hire someone to come into the school district and provide consultation and supports. Because we'll have that capacity and we'll have that type of personnel and talent within the district. Thank you.
Okay. I think, who's first here? I've lost track.
So have I.
I think, I think?
I think I just answered the last one first.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I'm kind of new at this. Okay, Dr. Krevker. What about the biggest priority specifically in District A? This is, of course, a district, not a at-large election. And District A has had some issues here and there. What do you see are the focus district priorities?
For me, it's class size. And making sure that within this, within the district, as well as this, as well, within District A, as well as the district, but that we have, say, for example, at Jefferson, that we have equitable distribution of students across classrooms. I'd like to somehow reduce class size, have the opportunity to not have portables. To me, portables are something that's supposed to be a Band-Aid, not a long-term type of solution. So for, the priority for me is to try and figure out what can we do now to reduce the class sizes and improve instruction in the classrooms? And in that sense, it's related to learning conditions and working conditions. Because we can't just say, excuse me, it's about the students. It's also about the adults who work with the students. So we have to make sure that the working conditions are there for them in order to work well with the students. I think we need to work on the now, but at the same time, plan for the future so that we no longer need portables in terms of the infrastructure. We need to build, extend the buildings. But I understand it's also related to budgets and issues that might restrain us from ideally planning what is needed for now and what we need to do for now. But we need to consider it and plan for it so this doesn't happen to us again in the future. And if it does, then it's only a temporary fix and not a long-term fix.
Mr. Perella?
Again, Jefferson is definitely the, let's say, the biggest, if you want to call it issue right now. I mean, I think it's obvious that it's overpopulated. You know, I know that there is plans within the next year's budget for, you know, reviewing the design for renovations, and then potentially money in the budget or projected budget for the year after to actually do some of those renovations. I'm not really convinced that that is going to be the answer. I think that we are at a critical point where the facility study that's going on right now is really going to tell us, you know, what is going on with the neighborhood schools, with different locations, with kids coming from other districts. You know, one thing that is really compelling about Jefferson is that even with the overcrowding, it's a school that was recognized for Blue Ribbon a year ago for closing the achievement gap. So there's things there that even with the challenges they're presented with, teachers and administrators are clearly getting it done. So even from, you know, the entire school board, you know, what are they doing that can be done in other schools? Another thing that I've been kind of hearing as I've talked to people among the district is people are concerned that are going to Tracy, parents from Tracy. Because with all the development going on, those kids aren't going to Jefferson. They're going to Tracy. So the increase in development in town is starting to drive up and raise concerns in other schools. So it really is looking at this facility studies to see what is the best way to utilize our facilities and potentially, you know, redistrict if needed.
Thank you. Dr. Krevker, do you have any, anything to add?
Uh, yeah. What I like to say is that, when I've been door-knocking and talking to some of the voters and some of the parents, their main concern is that this overcrowding has been going on for too long. So waiting for the facility study to come about and to tell us what we need to do, and having renovations or in the budget or projected to be in the budget, it takes too long. By the time that happens, someone might leave Jefferson, and they don't get the education that they need. So we have to try and figure out what can we do now? And what can we do now to ensure that teachers who are currently working there, who produced or the Blue Ribbon School, don't get tired of this and end up leaving? So we have to do something to make sure that we improve the working conditions and learning outcomes and learning conditions of the students in the schools now, as opposed to waiting and renovating down the road.
Thank you. Mr. Perella? All set. Okay. This one is for you. A few years ago, we were constantly hearing about the dysfunctional Board of Education. Then a new chairman took over. And then a new superintendent came in, a new chief financial officer, and there seemed to be a sigh of relief. Then things began to implode a little bit with the charge of racism on the board, the superintendent tearing down the structure, rebuilding it, then leaving, the mass exodus of central office personnel. What does the Board of Education need to do to regain its footing and the trust and respect of the citizens?
I think first and foremost, it's supporting our new superintendent. Again, the, you know, when you look at the way the board voted, he was not given unanimous decision to vote him in. As someone, you know, let's say, taking a new job, I don't think that's a great vote of confidence to begin with. So I think, I think first off, we need to support our new superintendent in the decisions he's making, and he's making some pretty good ones so far, I think, in developing the structure of leadership throughout, you know, the school system. I think the second thing is in rebuilding the confidence with the community is at least from my perspective as a, you know, potential board member is, you know, reaching out to the community more, being more involved with the community in terms of, you know, I view being a board member as almost being an advocate with the community for the school system. So I plan to do kind of, you know, what I've been doing as so far with campaigning is going out, talking to parents, talking to teachers, talking to former administrators, really anyone who has an opinion or something to say about the school system. I'm willing to listen to them and take that in as kind of the knowledge base that I use in making decisions.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Krevker?
Would you mind repeating the question?
Sure. Let's see. A few years ago, we were constantly hearing about the dysfunctional Board of Education. Then a new chairman took over, that would be Mr. Lyons. And then a new superintendent came in, a new chief financial officer, and there was this big sigh of relief. Then things began to implode with the charge of racism, the superintendent tearing down the structure, rebuilding it in his own way, and then leaving, and the mass exodus of central office personnel. What does the Board of Education need to do to regain its footing and the trust and respect of the citizens?
Okay. So the first thing is that as a board, you're charged with hiring the superintendent. So then, once you hire the superintendent, whether or not it was by a nine-to-oh vote, you need to support the superintendent. Because otherwise, what you end up happening is that superintendents will leave. And because they don't feel like they have enough control over reorganizing this district the way that they believe that it needs to be reorganized in order to move the district forward. That being said, it's also about the board members respecting each other and interacting with each other and with open communication and transparency. So if we have that on the board, then it's highly likely that we'll be able to fully support the superintendent because we all have the same goal. The goal is to improve outcomes for students. And it's not always about test scores, it's about helping them become good citizens. So once we have that in place, then the board can focus on establishing policies and programs to try and move the district further and supporting the superintendent in terms of getting the infrastructure in place and the organization of the district in place so that we're able to build capacity. From, in that way, we'll be able to support or be the voice of the district, as well as the District A, as well as the entire school district.
Thank you. Mr. Perella?
I just believe that the new format that the board has moved to with the one meeting a month being, you know, what they're calling a workshop, I think is definitely a huge step forward in kind of bringing the community in to really give them the opportunity to know what's going on, where they're not kind of just coming to a board meeting to hear, get a packet, and hear what's going on when the vote is made. So I think that's definitely a positive step forward as well in kind of bringing the community back and giving them, you know, let's say, a better feeling as to what's going on.
Thank you. Dr. Krevker?
As far as the new format, the first month being more of a workshop presentation, and the second month being more of a business meeting for the board, I like that format. What I envision or see in terms of that format is that it'll have the board members themselves interact more with each other outside of those meetings, which then in turn should make the meetings more effective and more efficient. So for me, the business meeting, the second meeting of the month, is more of a meeting where we just go there to vote and discuss things that already were discussed. So we should already know what the situation is in terms of whether or not something will pass or not pass, and we can try and work things through before we get to that point with the meeting.
Thank you. And this is your turn to go first. This may be, there may be a little redundancy in here, but I think it's important. "The Republican Party Board of Education platform states, 'All Republican board members voted to approve the new superintendent, Dr. Stephen Adamowski, and we pledge our full support to Dr. Adamowski as he moves forward with implementing the strategic plan, building a world-class administration, and instituting positive cultural changes in Norwalk Public Schools.'" "There's been a lot of criticism of members who have voted many times against the superintendent, in this case, in that case it was Dr. Rivera, against his agenda and against the majority of board members who were supporting that agenda." "How important is unanimity, and should the loyal opposition, as it were, be criticized for pursuing their agenda if they truly believe that things may be headed in the wrong direction?" "Is this a situation where the board members should follow their own head and heart, or should they just sort of go along to be supportive, as we talked about a few moments ago?"
Yeah, as a board member, I would definitely challenge something that I don't believe is going in the right direction for the district. But that challenge would be both based on my personal and professional experiences and background, as well as what I draw from, in terms of District A, parents and residents, including the rest of the district. So going back to what Mr. Perella had said earlier, is about, you know, making yourself available. So naturally, you need to make yourself available, but at the same time, use that information to guide or help you make decisions. In terms of, do you go along with or support? It's, to me, it's a little bit of both. You hire the superintendent, whether, you know, I'm on the board or Mr. Perella's on the board, we hire a superintendent. You hire a superintendent, even if you disagree with the person in terms of what they believe in or where they're going in that direction, your duty is to challenge that person. So if you believe something is not going in the right direction, you need to challenge that individual to say, why are you going in this direction? And convince me why this is the right way to go. Irrespective of what the outcome might be for that, you still need to support that individual because that individual is still trying to move the district forward in terms of improving outcomes for students and ensuring that teachers, administrators, and staff are receiving what they need in order to get things done, so to speak, for the students.
Mr. Perella?
You know, as a board member, I don't believe that you would necessarily be, you know, let's say, voting in step with the majority, you know, day in, day out. I think if you feel strongly about something, you know, again, you vote with what the information is you have in front of you and, again, how your head and your heart tell you. If your parents and community is telling you, you know, one thing which is against what, let's say, the other board members are voting for, and you clearly vote no on something, well, then, again, you've clearly kind of stated why you're making that vote. In some cases, the, you know, the current and, if you want to say, past board members, I think when they clearly vote no, it's been more of a symbolic no, and there really hasn't been anything to back what the decision was. If there's information that wasn't provided or whatever the situation was, they clearly haven't gone back to the community to explain what their, let's say, reason for a no was. So again, in the case of, let's say, voting against the board or voting against the decision, and at least in my position, I'd be clear where I stand and why I'm making that decision.
Thank you. Dr. Krevker?
I just wanted to add, in terms of supporting the superintendent and also challenging the superintendent, in terms of challenges, there are going to be times where I might say no. But in terms of saying no, it's going to be informed by transparency and collaboration. So when I do say yes or when I do say no, I need to make clear to those outside of the board why I agreed or disagreed with my decision. And I'm sure there are going to be times where what I think is correct may not be what others agree with, but I need to provide the evidence for it or the rationale for why I went that way.
Thank you. Mr. Perella?
Again, I think it's, you know, with voting, I think at some point too, you have to also say, you know, you're going to win some and you're going to lose some. And I think at some point, you have to really look at a decision and say, is this something that I'm really going to fall on my sword for? So again, if the community is really backing where your head is and where your decision-making is, that's one thing. But I think in some cases, you know, you're going to do with, you know, you're going to make a decision based on the information that you have.
Thank you. And we've come to the final question. And this is theoretical, of course. It depends on a couple of different things. Mike Lyons has been chairman for three years, despite having a solid Democratic majority on the board, which annoys some people in the Democratic Party in District A, as a matter of fact. If Mike Lyons wins reelection this year, would you plan to vote for Mr. Lyons for a fourth year? And if he's, if he is not nominated by someone else, would either of you put him into nomination for chairman? Mr. Perella?
Absolutely. As a, so first off, as a parent who has, you know, witnessed kind of the comings and goings of the board over the past, you know, five to eight years, with a lot of the- You know, uh, five to eight years, um, with a lot of the turmoil with superintendents coming and going. Um, Mike Lyons has been the sound, you know, board member who has really kept a lot of it together. So I would be all for it. I would support him a hundred percent.
Thank you. Doctor?
Um, based on my observations and what I've read so far, um, I have no issues in not voting for him to be uh. Chairman again, if I were to be on the board. But at the same time, if there's someone else on the board who would like to try and become chairman. I would like to take a look at that person's uh ability to uh bring everyone together and to see what their vision or direction is. We, in saying that, what I'm also saying is that we also should have diversity of thought and leadership. So I do approve of Mr. Lyons's work so far. But at the same time, if we have others on the board that wish to become chairman or think that they can move the district in other ways, we should also consider that person as well.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Perella, response? All set? Okay, uh, and uh, this would uh bring us to the closing statements and uh. Uh, let's see, you opened up, uh, doctor, and uh, so, Mr. Perella, you go first.
Okay, um, thank everyone for listening and and listening to our answers. I'd just like to say that as a, as a, you know, born and raised individual from Norwalk who's gone through the Norwalk school system. With kids going through the school system now. Um, I'm committed to, you know, doing right by the taxpayers and the parents. Um, as a board member, you know, thoroughly thinking, doing the research. Um, looking at every, every angle that I possibly can in a decision, decision-making process. Um, you know, evaluating the risk associated with it and really making sure that we are, you know, making sound decisions. Um, and and also, again, being truly like an advocate for the the parents, taxpayers, and and ultimately children of Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Krevker?
I like to close by saying that uh I don't view the board as being a Democratic member or a Republican member or. Independent or unaffiliated. To me, the board is individuals who who wanna be on the board to so to help students. Um, in all all ways, in terms of wraparound services, uh, help them become who they should be. Give them opportunities to decide what they wanna do with their future, as opposed to having limited opportunities. In saying that, uh, wh- what I'm also saying is that I wanna be an advocate uh for the students. Um, I know the types of hardships that I experienced being s- uh, being a student. And uh, through my experiences uh being educator. I see things that I can do besides just writing about it in terms of research. I wanna uh get my, I guess, boots on the ground kinda kinda thing. Um, to really try to make decisions and use my expertise to help move our school district forward. Because I don't see any reason why Norwalk compared to any other school district in the state. Or if it were any other school district, why there should be differences among school districts. I think every student, no matter where they live in Connecticut, should have an equal opportunity. And that's my charge, my personal charge, if I were to be on the board.
Thank you. That just about wraps things up. I wanna thank both candidates for uh making time on a Sunday morning. Uh, to do this, I know that it's been very difficult to get you both in the in the room at the same time. It's unfortunate that it had couldn't be done under the uh same conditions as uh everyone else, but uh. Uh, that's why we're here, to do things a little differently than everybody else at Nancy on Norwalk. So uh, again, thank you very much. Yes, let's all feel free to applaud and share. Uh, and uh, I wanna thank uh, thank the viewers for paying attention and for for. Taking such an an interest in what's going on in our schools, because this is our future. Uh, the schools are important, the school boards are four-year positions, and what whoever is elected. Uh, does over the next four years, uh, is going to have a profound effect on. On individual lives and on the city of Norwalk for for years and decades to come. So thank you, gentlemen, for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.